So, on to the housing grant then. Yes?
How will we be notified if they choose to recommit?
Through, you'd have to talk to the planning and development office and they can tell you. But as butters would be notified on that.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Steve Schneider. I'm with Upper Valley Lake Sonopee Regional Planning Commission. We've been working with this board for about a year now on the housing grant. So it was, how do we make housing, how do we make the Claremont Land Use Reg more open and friendly to housing? Does that sound right?
Right.
Okay. Yeah. And so we've spent the last part of, later part of last year doing research and community events and getting surveys out to both the public and the businesses in town. I know that several of the planning board members were active participants in that effort, in those efforts, and we thank you for that. We spent the last few months kind of brainstorming, right? And so we're going to ask this group tonight to do some of that as well. So, Olivia's passing out is an updated shortlist of recommendations and then also a couple of good graphs, right? So we're going to get into those in a little bit. If you can look at that front page. Initially, we thought we might break into groups, but I think it'll be a little difficult. So we're going to, we're going to ask everybody here to kind of brainstorm together as we go through these three topics. We're going to start with housing types, talk about housing quality, and then finally minimum lot size, right? So these are, we've got the only three, but these are three issues that could result in some easy fixes, language fixes, that might encourage housing in, in all kinds of different places in town, right? In the city. I going to be on the mic? Okay. Sorry about that. I like to wander. So anyway, we're going to, we're going to scribe a little bit as we go through this. We're going to ask you to take a minute or two and do some reflection and take some things down, and then we'll get back together and kind of talk a little bit more. And so when you look at the front page there, there are eight separate items. Each of those have a lot of different options to them, and they're really kind of there to get you thinking. We certainly don't want to reinvent the wheel. We also don't want to push or recommend something that isn't going to be appropriate for Claremont or fit within what you believe to be, you know, the right type of housing and the right spaces, right? So we don't want to, we don't recommend dense, high rises in, you know, out in the agriculture zone, right? That doesn't make any sense. But there may be some recommendations in terms of, you know, where water and sewer goes, where the, you know, where the, the main city infrastructure is that, you know, we may push a little bit and get you folks to think a little differently than we may, than you may have in the past. I'm assuming everybody's looked at this. I'm crossing my fingers. Yeah? Okay. And feel free to dig in and ask a question as we go through this. There's, I think we have, Scott told us we have about an hour. So if we can, if we can spend all that time, great. If it takes us a little less, that's fine as well. So if we can start with housing types? Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. And so what we're trying to do, when we're thinking about housing types, is to think five, 10, 20 years in the future, right? And think about, what are the, what are the ideal housing types that you'd like to see in the community? So as I'm saying this, if something comes to your mind, write it down, and then we'll get it up on the board. It's, it's essential for any community to have diverse housing types for it to be sustainable, for it to be resilient, for it to be moving forward. You know, there's a life cycle of housing types. You know, you start out in an apartment, you know? Maybe you're by yourself, maybe you're with a couple, and you start out with an apartment. You transition to the starter home, to a family home, to the empty nest home, back to the apartment, right? So it's, it's kind of a, all of those, those are all diverse housing types, and those are all things that, based on the research that we've done, that, you know, there's, there's a demand for all of those levels as we go through this, right? So as we, as we think about housing types, think about that life cycle and kind of, is there enough of one? Maybe one type should be closer to this particular place in the community. One might be more ideal in another spot. Am I missing anything?
No, I think we just, we wanted...
You're going to have to speak.
I think, I think the idea, we're going to go through three kind of discussions, as you see in your packet, and what Steve has asked is kind of, we're going to ask you to take a couple of minutes to kind of take a few notes, think about your own thoughts on the topic, and then we'll go into discussion, and then we'll do that for each, each topic. So for this one, it's, you know, imagining that future Claremont and how it might have adapted its housing. What does that look like in the city center? What might that look like in the rural area? You know, what, what kind of images, what kind of thoughts come to your mind when you're considering, you know, a higher population in the city possibly?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
So with our recently adopted, now going into the second year of use, our new master plan, it has a very extensive housing chapter. And so I want to make sure that the work that we're doing here with this adds to and continues the focus that's laid out in the vision and the goals and objectives for the housing chapter.
Yeah?
Yes, I'm, yeah, I'm really glad you brought that up, and we've been really looking at that chapter and identifying goals within the chapter that correlate to different of the recommendations that we might language, we might be putting forward eventually, and I think this, this discussion is going to help us gear that. We are, you know, say for zoning, the zoning tables that you have in front of you that our colleague Vicki put together, they are on the existing zoning regulations, you know, for example, the future land use map that was in that document. You know, this, this discussion could apply to changes if the, that was something this group, this body, the city wanted to move forward in. It could be adapted as well.
So we're, would be very helpful and very relevant from what I just said, if you, in your, in a summary after tonight's work, were to say this, this, these are the specific parts of this grant's work that's directly going to add to the goals and objectives and, and the list of objectives connected to the CIP plan. So if you could kind of correlate that for us...
Yes, we can incorporate that into the report.
Yep. Then it becomes another guide as we do our work overseeing what the master plan is doing. Okay?
Sounds great.
Thank you.
And also, I think, anything that you find contradictory, that if you see something in there that you think that maybe we, we should be looking at...
Yes, thank you, yes.
That too.
Look at that as well.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, it's, it's zoning documents, they're a living, right? So they, they continue to be adopted, amended and changed. And so every 10 years or so, you should really shake it out and, and get through some of those conflicts and, blanking on the term. Anyway, conflicts that just exist, you know, you may have adopted language that conflicts with another part that you wouldn't have thought that you were affecting. So that's part of what we're doing too, is, is making sure that, that the language is consistent throughout zoning. So that's part of our work, and some of that may just by itself ease some of the process. So part of, when we talk about housing quality a little bit, part of that is, is the process of, of maintaining property and changing property, right? And, and if you're a layman and trying to understand and read zoning document and language, it's not an easy thing. It's, it's a specialized skill, and so, and if it's conflicts with one another in certain spaces, it just makes it that much harder and discouraging for, you know, folks to say, "Yeah, you know what? I want to do something, but I can't understand this thing, so why bother? I'm going to go somewhere else, so I'm just going to let this property mellow a little bit." So, anyway, housing types, so take, take a minute or so and just think about those ideal housing types. Remember, we talked about that life cycle and kind of where you think those housing types should fit within the community? And then we'll record that stuff, and then we'll move on to housing quality. So we'll just take one minute.
Just want to ask, if you want to let the audience just page as well?
Sure. I think it'd be advantageous for us to have a discussion amongst ourselves also as we work on this. I just want to express a thought when we look at housing types. It'd be really, I think, an important thing to understand is what the future population of the city is going to be, what's our forecast? Are they going to be mostly senior citizens? Are we looking for family?
Those are drivers.
In the economic development of the community, do we want to focus on building homes for families so that there would be a growing population of homes for future employees of the, for the new businesses that might move here?
Yeah.
There is, one of the problems that we hear about is the housing shortage for good rentals and for young families, and that's been a stumbling block when different manufacturers have looked to move here. Because, you know, one of the questions we have had asked, what kind of a trained workforce do you have? And if a trained workforce isn't here because of lack of housing, quality of the schools...
Sure.
Or if there's not a job here, you know, it all kind of goes hand in hand. So this, this kind of work has to kind of predict and determine what we want for the future.
Yeah.
It's complicated.
It is complicated. Housing is the absolute issue that, if we can get it right, will lead to the long-term success of not only this part of the upper valley, but the whole, both sides of the river, right? So we're not just a one side of the river community, we're both sides. And it, it makes sense for us to make sure that, when we look at this issue, that we're looking at kind of everybody that's going to fit into this. And we're old, there's no doubt about it, and we're getting older. There's no question that...
Thanks.
I'm still one of the youngest people that it shows up at meetings, right? And I'm 50, and that's, that's, that's just the way it goes.
Wow. You're only 50?
But we're, but we're, we're getting older. Sullivan, Grafton, New Hampshire, Vermont, they all lead the, the pack in terms of average age. We're in our mid-40s. I think the only county that's older than us is maybe Carroll County or Bellknap, the one of the lakes. And they're, they're some, they're like in their 50s, so that's, that's kind of an outlier. But, you know, New Hampshire and Vermont and Maine, we're one, two, and three in terms of getting older. So we have to address that. We can't, you can't survive if everybody is 50-plus, right? So the housing has to be able to adapt to that. The other thing that I think we're going to identify is that young families and empty nesters are competing for the same housing market, right? So they want that starter home or that empty nest home. They're about the same size. They, they serve the same need. They don't need all that space for big family, and it's, it's usually smaller, but the, the empty nesters are coming to the party with a lot more money than the first-time home buyers, because the empty nesters are, they have the equity of their family home to say, "You know what? I can pay full price."
Yep.
And all of a sudden, the market shoots up, and it gets more expensive, and it prices out those first timers, and you don't want that to happen, because then you lose the, the youth and the families and the things that the community needs to, to continue to grow, so...
So economics has a role with this.
It's a huge role, there's no doubt about it.
And there's a shift now going on. We had an economic developer, a nationally recognized economic developer here a few months ago, and one thing that he reported on that really struck me is the average age for people selling homes are in their late 60s, mid 60s. The average age for people buying homes has been traditionally around 30 years old. That's changing now though, because of the amount of college debt that young people have.
Right.
And so the age of buying homes is starting to move up.
It's as high as it's ever been.
Yep.
Yeah.
And so what kind of role do we have, the community have, in forecasting our housing needs, knowing that that is influencing what people can afford to buy?
I think it's safe to assume that whether or not more people go to college, that's up for debate, but certainly the cost of college is certainly going to continue to rise, right?
Right.
So if that's, that's a factor for folks being able to take those next steps in their life, to say, "You know what? I've, I've got all this debt from college, I can't afford also a mortgage, or I can't accumulate enough wealth to put that down payment." Because in reality, rental, what you pay for a two or three-bedroom house or an apartment is going to be equal to or even more than it would be for a mortgage. So it's really that, that first bit of wealth that you need to be able to say, "Yep, here's my 10% that I can put down on a home so that I can get out of that and build up equity so I can get out of that rental cycle of, of not being able to, to build up that personal wealth." You going to say something?
Sorry, yeah, I just wanted to, to add that with the changes in college debt, that there's also changes in terms of what type of housing is desirable for, say, millennials. So it's, right, a continually adapting system, housing. The suburbs weren't always, weren't always a suburb, they used to be rural. They used to be, there's, be, you know, the city center, the town center was where everything was, and then it's sprawled out, and to some degree, it's coming back in. And so I don't, I, I think that with the housing types, it's giving, you know, what kind of options need to be available for people to consider in the different areas that fit within the character of the city, while giving people those different options and allowing that adaptation to kind of occur without having to necessarily know beforehand, because it can be difficult to, to kind of do that sometimes.
Yeah. On the municipal side, I speak from experience as a 20-year town manager. We're bad at predicting the future, especially economic development stuff. It's just not what we're, what we went to school for, for the most part. So what you, what we want to do is to be able to develop and have regulations that allow for innovation, allow for flexibility, allow for adaptation, without compromising what makes Claremont special, right? I know that Claremont is a Strong Town proponent and supporter. You know, you had, was it Chuck Maron here earlier this year?
That's who I was speaking of.
And he came and he, yeah, he toured the community and gave a great speech over at the community center. And he's, their belief is that you need to be able to allow things to just experiment a little bit. So we're not saying, we're not recommending, we're not going to ask or require this, this community to be the, the, you know, the science room where we're doing all these crazy experiments, but to allow reasonable incremental changes. That's what Strong Towns was about, is, was allowing folks to, to say, "You know what? We're going to allow this change to occur, and if it works, great, and if it doesn't, we'll go back and we'll try something different." We have a tendency on the municipal side is that once we pass something, that's it. We don't look at it again for another 10 or 15 years, right? And so that's the charge, is that we can do our work and we'll give you suggestions, but afterwards, you got to keep this thing kind of a living, breathing document and make sure, it's like, "You know what? Scott, tell us what's happening with this type of housing. Do the changes make any difference? No? Well, then maybe we should try something different." And make sure that, that you're not stuck, and if something were to come here and say, "You know what? We'd love to be able to do this," and you can flip open your zoning or site plan or something, and say, "You bet, we can make that work, not a problem. And here's how we can get it done in a reasonable amount of time so that the community can participate and feel like they're part of the process, but also the developer doesn't feel like they're being strung along for months and months and months and months and months." So, housing types, any other? Yes?
I have a couple of questions, because on your list, shortlist of recommendations, you said allow more ADUs, and I was trying to figure out where that came from, because I've lost track of time, but it was a year or two years ago, we adopted the ordinance to allow ADUs.
Yeah. So it's, do you want to speak to that? Yeah?
And that was just to stay up with the state law, correct?
Right.
Right. But it set the parameters, so...
Right.
If you, so when our understanding of the, the zoning ordinance, looking at ADUs, it was, there were a fair degree of limitations in terms of when you could put in an ADU in relation to it being attached or owner, owner occupied, and it's not permitted in any district. And so I think the, the idea here is to create a little bit more leniency around ADUs. Okay, so...
It's something that the, that the community already permits, right? But there are, you can be a little more flexible perhaps with the regulations and the specifics with how they are established, right? So does it have to be owner occupied? Does the owner have to live in the bigger part, right? Can somebody transition from the house to the accessory dwelling unit and it still be okay? Does it have to be attached? Does it have to have a door in between it, right? So there are lots of little nooks and crannies that, that may allow somebody to take a look at their property and say, "Well, under the old one, I would have had to spend some serious money to make this work, but under these new rules, I can make that happen." And all of a sudden, you've, you've doubled the density on a particular lot, right? So instead of having one person occupy what could be two places, now you have two groups.
I know we had, I know we had a lot of discussion on this, and I believe that the door between the two entities was required by state law in order for it to be defined as an ADU.
You can have detached ADUs.
Yeah, we didn't go there yet because, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This was to, because of an applicant looking to do some...
No, it was because of the state had adopted it, and we wanted...
Right, there was, and he, he went right through.
Yep.
That was in there. But, I mean, so a couple, I have got a couple of questions, but since on this, I mean, are you worried by limiting, limiting that, that you're going to allow some of the bigger houses just to become more of a rental property? I mean, why wouldn't you just say, you know, make it easier to create a rental property? I mean...
Sure. So instead of it being an ADU, it would just be a duplex or a triplex?
Right.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know that that's something that we would, that, I think that's part of what we, we would like to have, that the, the planning board help us so that when we prepare this language, it's, it reflects what you're looking for. So ADUs is certainly one part of it, and there are ways that, you know, we can suggest language so that you can take a look at it and make sure that it fits. But there's also other things, like saying, you know, "If my, my home is too big for me and I can figure out a way to make it into a duplex, well, let's see how we can put together some language that makes that work as well." Because that's, maybe that's a different solution for properties. And does that fit within a neighborhood? You know, when you think about when Claremont was at its peak, I guarantee you, there were neighborhoods that had duplexes and triplexes and single-family homes all throughout it, right? And that was just the neighborhood. And there was a corner store, and there was, you could walk, and, and so it was much denser, especially in the city center, right? The country's always going to be the country.
So the city center project led to a new way of applying for home improvements.
Yep.
It was called form-based code.
Yep.
And we drafted our own version of it because of the age of our houses in Claremont.
Yep.
So that right away defines an applicant, gives the applicant the right to make improvements to their home and property as long as it fits the neighborhood. And you've already said just a moment ago, that if the neighborhood already has duplexes and triplexes, are we limiting the opportunity for somebody else to do it? Or is it automatically there already because of already what's going on in the neighborhood?
In the city center part?
Yes.
Right.
So now what you're thinking is if we expand that outside the city center?
Maybe there are places where that's appropriate.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that would be a recommendation then.
Sure. Okay.
The other, the other thing that happened maybe 12 or 13 years ago, I helped write a ordinance for open space development, and I know Nancy still has a copy of it.
Yeah.
And so that's another possibility, as long as the water and sewer hookup can be worked with the city. Open space development does a nice job in congregating housing in a smaller area, using the land for the common good all around it.
Yeah, we're going to get there.
Okay.
That's our last discussion, minimum lot size.
All right.
Yeah. No, 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 you're absolutely right. Olivia and I were...
But I think that's, that helps push forward different housing types.
It does. Yep. And so it's, oh, go ahead.
Well, I don't want to cut you off.
No, no, it's fine.
So the, I guess, when we talk about multifamily dwellings, the concerns that I've heard from people in the public, as well as documents about housing, is that our rental unit percentage is very high. So, you know, I don't know how you balance that with the fact that we have a 0% vacancy, right?
Right.
But I do know, look, I just was at a, a regional lead action team conference, and, you know, are compared to other communities in several counties, the number of rental units in this city is very high. So when we talk about adding more to that, I guess I get concerned.
Sure.
So I don't know if there is in planning, I don't know if there's a balance, that is a best practice balance.
For the number of, of rentals versus owner occupied?
Yes.
I think it depends, I think it depends on the community, you know? I think that, that balance shifts, kind of, there's ebbs and flows to it, and right now, you're in a spot where there's, you seem to be on the higher end of rentals than, than you have in the past.
And not owner occupied, which has been another problem.
So that's, that's the next part of our discussion, is, is housing quality. So housing types.
And then I got a quick question on, on manufactured housing.
Yep.
So back when we hadn't done the master plan for a number of years, and so back in like '06, I think was when we, we first started kind of working on it again.
Yep.
And in the previous master plan, it was encouraged, and then in that master plan, it was discouraged. And it seems like it's been discouraged from a state level. So I'm, I'm kind of curious on where you're coming in from that.
Whether or not we encourage or discourage, or should Claremont look to have more manufactured housing? I think what you should do as a, as a board and as a community is make sure that, like I said before, that you are as adaptable as you can be. And if there's a part of the community that makes sense for there to be manufactured housing, or there is a, a revolution in manufactured housing, and all of a sudden, it becomes a different process, and so it's not just a mobile home, right? So it's not those things that we, we typically associate with manufactured homes. And the state figures out how to address tiny homes, and that becomes a place where...
They have a committee for it now.
I'm sorry?
They have a committee to study it.
They do have a committee, right. And so, you know, you want to make sure that all of a sudden, you know what? Claremont can be the place for a tiny home community, and it, it, you know, reflects the open space that the master plan identifies. It, it attracts younger folks. It's manufactured housing, and so it's a different type. So I would... So I wouldn't say that we would always encourage or always discourage. I think it's one of those things, it's another quiver in your arsenal that you can use for different types of development. You just want to, and you'll hear this from you over and over again, is that you want to make sure that you can change and you can allow things to happen that still fit within your master plan. And take that Strong Towns approach of allowing experimentation incrementally, because they weren't all about the big change, they were kind of allowing, well, let this guy do this little bit of thing, and if it works out, you can get that next level. If that works out, then go to the next level. But if it doesn't work out, we haven't made, we haven't made somebody go through a lot of hoops, spend a lot of money to try something out. So that's a long answer to your question.
Right, well, but I don't know if it actually answered that.
I don't think, well, I don't know, well, you're not going to get an answer from us that says, yes, you should have more manufactured housing.
So what you're doing is that you're just saying, these are types of housing, we don't know if they've worked well in different communities, but this is something you can try.
Here's a, here is a housing type that could be an answer for people that want to live in Clermont.
And our ordinance on mobile homes?
Yep.
1977.
Yep.
So, yeah, 1977, that was.
That was a good year. Way is back.
Yeah.
Forty-two years ago.
The year I was married.
Okay. Anything else on housing types?
Keep going.
As we, as we kind of transition, yeah, Dave?
It says, your survey said that what's needed more is affordable housing senior and accessible housing and transitional housing.
Yeah.
Can you define, so that we're all on the same page, what your version of transitional housing is?
Sure. So it's, it's.
It's one of those answers.
It's, it's folks transitioning from one part of their life to another. And so whether that's health-related, or it's bad decisions-related, it's that type of housing. And so, and this is something that is an under-built resource throughout New Hampshire, and certainly the Upper Valley and this part of the state as well. It's just one of those things that there's always a need, but communities are cautious, right? Because it's, folks, you know, you need to have that right support system to make sure that transitional housing fits. And that doesn't always happen. And so it's, it's a, it's, it can be challenging to make sure that it fits in particular places in the community. Sullivan County is going to help us when we do our larger regional study to help us identify and work with that transitional housing community and figure out where it makes sense to be in both sides of the river. You know, where are the needs, where are the folks coming from? Where does it make sense for them to be? Where are the, where are the social services at? Where are the support systems at? All those go into kind of transitional housing. And I know that, you know, Clermont and Lebanon and Hartford and Springfield, those places that are, you know, the bigger communities, they tend to have more of that. Because that's where the social services are, that's where the support is. Doesn't necessarily make sense to have transitional housing in the agricultural zone, where they're going to be isolated and not part of a community. That's a tough question, but, so.
No, they didn't answer it.
Hopefully that's a little more correct, but I mean, it helps people get from one place in their life to another. That's transitional housing to me.
So that's basically a lot of people going round and round and round? They're not going to stay in the house for a long period of time because they're transitioning?
Yeah, yeah. And some are going to be successful and some aren't. That's life, right? You can't say that everybody's going to transition out and succeed. That's part of, that's part of the housing. That's part of the, of life right there.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Anything else on housing types? So, housing quality. This is both the appearance of housing and also the experience of housing.
I'm sorry, when we looked at updates on specific housing types, then I expected to go on to three, four, five, six, seven, eight. So you're covering all of those in the prior discussion?
I'm sorry, so.
I got what you're doing, thank you.
Yeah, so we are kind of condensing our discussions into just three groups.
Okay.
So the first one was types, second one is going to be housing quality, so there should be a page that identifies that.
Yep.
And so when we think about housing quality, it's the appearance and the experience. So what housing looks like, and what's the experience of folks that want to change the quality of their house, or the experience of folks living in certain qualities of dwelling units.
So one of the issues that has developed over the last 20, 25 years is the quality of our housing and the conditions of buildings. And I've heard through realtors that it's created a little bit of an image of Clermont, that we don't offer consistently a lot of well-maintained, high-quality homes compared to other communities that are around us. And it is all because of what people can afford to do with their properties. You know, that's just a given. So when we had our conversations and meetings concerning the lead paint issues, one idea I remember being floated around was, what if we could say, we have X number of homes in Clermont that have been fully abated for lead paint? And that each one of those homes could be recognized with a certificate or acknowledgement?
Yep.
That then people would say, well, this town is progressive, they're working on cleaning up their buildings and making them safe for children and families. So that becomes a way of promoting your community.
Yep.
So my goal personally, in how it fits with the master plan on housing quality, is to work towards being able to promote the city by saying, we're improving our housing, and we're working on it one house at a time, we're making them safe for families and children. So that's the goal, as an example. Now we need to talk about how we're going to do it.
How we do it.
And it's a strategy that I've used on many other problems or concerns in the city and other places. We've identified the goal, and then we have to figure out with another discussion how we're going to do it. And so, but you don't get things mixed up too much when you do it that way.
Mm-hmm.
You focus. And then you can do it step by step. I think that's a lot of where we are with housing conditions, is understanding where we all want to be, and then how are we going to do it?
Yeah, and.
I'll let you talk to that now.
I think, I think it's, I think that's the way any real change happens, right? Is you have that clear goal, you got a group, and we say, this is how we're going to do it. How you deal with lead paint, I think the city's taken steps towards that. And I think it's a great idea in terms of saying, we now have this many number of lead-free dwelling units, right? So it may not even be a home, it could be an apartment, it could be, right, a town home or condo or something. So I think that's a, that's a way to, and that continually is updated, right?
Yep.
And you've got a number at the top, like, you know, you see those thermometers fundraising, where you can kind of promote as you go along, goals as they get achieved. You know, there are lots of ways to kind of engage the community when it, in terms of housing quality. I would say that, for the most part, if you own your home, there's pride there. It's expressed in different ways, but folks want to be able to live in someplace that they're, that they can call home and be proud of it. I know that Clermont has, you know, absentee landlords, right? And that's the, how do we get those folks engaged in a way that they feel like they should be making improvements as well? And so.
They're not reinvesting in the community.
Right, and that's, that's the issue, right? Is how do they, how do they recognize that this is their community as well? Whether or not they live here, they've made an investment here, so they should feel like there's a, that there's some connection. And that they could be improving their own return if they made an investment. And so how do we, how do we allow that to happen? How do we amend the regulations so that folks can make changes? And that's, that's the experience part of it, the process of improving your property. So it's, there are lots of different ways you can do it. And so we're going to hopefully share with you some ideas at the end, not tonight, but as we present our final product to you, that say, here's, here's a way that perhaps this could reduce somebody's process time as they go from making an application to actually fixing it. You know, Clermont has a strong community identity, right? It's, it doesn't happen in many places, but this place has it. And so, working on that identity and using that as a strength and saying, I'm proud of where I live, I'm going to help you to make sure that you're proud of where you live. So it takes a lot of community effort. You know, the city can certainly be a lead in that, whether it's through education and sponsoring, you know, folks like Strong Towns coming in and talking, but, you know, you know, maybe it's more of the basics and having folks, here's how you can, you know, paint your house, here's how you can change parts of your kitchen, here's how you can put in a new toilet, you know, and then develop that funding mechanism, that's the hard part, right? So, yes, I want to fix it, and now I know how, but how do I pay for it? And so that's where we, you know, some of our research with the employers, and one of the questions we asked was, would you be willing to pay, would you be willing to be a participant in making changes for housing for employees? And so, you know, the response was, what does that mean? Am I, you know, am I building a house for an employee? Am I giving somebody money so that they can build something? But there are examples out there where employers can set up funds that specifically for employees that say, you know what, we're going to, you're committed to staying with us, we're committed to you staying in this community. And you create a, you know, a little program that, you know, North Country Smokehouse can say, yep, or Hypotherm can say, you know what, we want folks to stay in Clermont because it's important to them, and if they can continue to commute up to us, that's great, and so let's figure out a way that, you know, we can, we can support that. I know that DHMC is always interested in building housing. I think there was another hospital in our region that was interested in building something for, you know, nurses and support staff, and, you know, all the folks that do the real work, no offense to doctors and administrators, but.
There's none of them here.
Okay.
So, that was one of your, on the previous page, that you'd said, increase employer involvement.
Yeah.
So have you surveyed any of the employers in the area?
Yeah.
On that?
Yeah, you want to speak to that? We did. It was mixed results. I mean, we tried to get the employers, they weren't all Clermont-based, because not everybody, you know, they work at the hospital, they work at Hypotherm, they work at the college, but we certainly did focus on employers here as well.
Yeah, so it was about a third of the employees of that survey were based in Clermont. And the result on the question that Steve was referencing about, would you support employer-assisted housing, you know, in the broad context, right? I believe there, you know, were one or two on each end, yes or no, but most of the, most people fell into the need to know more. And so, as a, you know, glass half-full, positive kind of person, I see that as an opportunity. That means if, you know, there's openness to the possibility for the right program, for the right type of housing, the right type of model. One example that's pilot, that's happening over in Arlington, Vermont, is run by NeighborWorks, and they're working on kind of a financial model where they put money and help people, help actually new, new home buyers buy a home, fix it up. And then when that person goes to sell that home again, part of the revenue goes back into the pile to get, to rehab more homes. And the, a big employer in that municipality is putting some funds for employees that sign up because they want their workers to stay in the town. A lot of people move out of the, live outside of the town, across the state line even in Massachusetts. So that's one model that, you know, they're kind of seeing how it goes, and, but there's a lot of different models of how employers can get involved, depending on what kind of aspect you want to focus on. And it could be something that's, you incorporate multiple employers, Clermont has many employers, big and small, there could be ways to get involvement from all of those, you know, I go to events, in Clermont, they're supported by small business, it's quite incredible actually to see the support the community has from the businesses in this community, support really free, accessible, available events for the community. And I don't see why something similar couldn't happen with housing, and, you know, improving that experience and for people who, where it would be of benefit, so.
Yeah, you know, employer-owned or employer-focused housing isn't new. I mean, there are plenty of millhouses out there, right? There are plenty of towns that were company towns, where the company owned the building that you lived in, and the building that you worked in. So that's not a new concept, it's just dusting off these old ideas that worked for a long time and saying, you know what, maybe there's another time for this. Certainly farms and agriculture, they have a strong tradition of having employee, employer-owned housing on their properties as well. So it's not, it's not something new. And without having, you know, that fresh employee base, employers aren't going to stay, right? They have to have workers. And so we need to be able to convince them through data and ease of development that, you know what, this is going to work here. There's no reason why you can't build 100 units for your employees if you think it's right. And here's where it's going to fit, and here's why it makes sense, and here's how the city can assist in that.
When you were talking about alternative inspection systems, did you have something specific in mind? Because I know we've been talking to Manchester about how they're doing their inspections, Manchester, New Hampshire, we as a city.
Yeah, so I think it's, it's the rentals, right? It's getting folks, every time there's a transition, every time there's a change, the city would get in there and say, for the next tenant to come in, you need to do these things, right? So there's a way for the city to be involved in.
Well, I understand that, but I was wondering if you had some specific models in mind when you made that suggestion? I know Manchester does that, every time a rental unit turns over, they do an inspection.
But that's only like Section 8 or something like that, correct?
No, not from what I'm hearing from Aaron.
I find that kind of, so if I'm a private owner of an apartment building, and I have no safety issues, I'd find it kind of hard that the city would come in and.
They're targeting those dwellings that they know may have health issues.
Right.
But not necessarily Section 8, could be pre-1978 would let.
Right.
Right.
Yeah. No, I don't know that we had anything specific. No, I don't know that we had anything specific. Yeah.
Just the Manchester model that you mentioned, that we were looking at. And then also in relation to the other type of inspection, it's more periodic. That could, rather than every time there's turnover, it could be, it would be on a periodic basis. So you have to, you are allowed, you're required to be inspected every certain amount of time according to, right, the capacity of the building inspectors. And so there's been some systems that have set up, for example, like, we have river cleanups. So before inspection period, which might be one month or two months every year before that time, you have a home cleanup day. So before the inspectors come, it's like a community day to take pride in your home, right? So that's, that's another model that we're looking at. But we haven't worked out specific language for Claremont yet, that how we'll move forward from this.
Thank you.
You know, I know that this is one of those services that there's never enough staff to do the work that's needed, right? And it's hard. And it's, it's tough to get people qualified, right? Qualified people to do this work. It's a, it's a struggle. And it's tough to kind of make that investment when there's so many other needs. But this is one of those things that can improve both the appearance and the experience for folks. And so I don't know how that gets written down in language, but I'm not speaking, I'm speaking to the choir. I think folks understand that that's a, it's needed, but it's also expensive. Because it's people.
Yeah, Mr. Putnam?
It is a conundrum because you don't know what comes first. And, and so I think in order to get the momentum going, the planning board and the city council, working with the administration in the city, i.e. the city manager and, and others, have to consistently make a statement about improving the image of Claremont. And part of it is the housing. And, and, and to engage the community to work on it together. It's, it's not just what's on paper, what's rules and regulations, but it's also creating a vision and momentum for the people to feel good about the town and, and make an effort to take part in it. You know, as a former school board member, I can't tell you how many times I could hear a parent say, when's the school going to fix my child? Always putting it on the school.
Right.
For how their child was behaving or whatever. And the housing conditions are the same deal, you know, it's.
The city's going to fix our housing.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's right. So I'm sorry, but, so there has to be a really clear, consistent, you can't say it once in a while like we are tonight.
Yeah.
You gotta say it all the time.
Yeah.
It used to be said that it took 14 or 15 times for somebody to hear something before they want to hear it.
Yeah.
I think that's gone up a little by now.
It's possible.
Yep. So, so how many times do we have to proclaim that we want to improve the image of Claremont? And one of the ways is by how we look.
Yeah.
You can go down every street and find houses that are in bad shape and need to be reconditioned. And when you see one of those, it detracts from the good-looking houses.
It does.
So I'm tired of seeing that.
Yeah.
To be honest with you, I've been here a long time. I moved here in 1970. And there's been this constant erosion and deterioration of, of the way we look since then. So, you know, we've just got to get, we got to put the hammer down and say, come on.
This is, this is an issue that isn't unique to Claremont.
I know that.
Right? But there are.
I don't care about anyone else right now.
I know. But there are success stories close by, right? So White River Junction is a success.
Wallpole is another one.
Wallpole's a success. Those are communities where it didn't happen overnight. It took 10, 15, 20 years for change to really be noticeable and for folks to say, especially in White River, yep, I'll build this four-story senior housing called The Village where I never have to leave the building, but it also costs like $10,000 a month to live there. That's an investment. And they believe that somebody's going to pay that to live in that thing, right? In that building. It took 20 years for, for White River to get there. And so it takes a consistent message from the city. It takes a partner, a financial partner, a developer that says, I'm willing to do this, I'm willing to take some chances and to make an investment. And it takes time. It's just not something that's going to happen overnight. And that's the, that's the, that's the difficulty of this work is that you can point to successes as you go through, but this is a city of 15,000 people. And it's going to take a while for all 15,000 to feel like, yep, we've made a real difference here, we're making a substantial change. It may not take 20 years for folks to feel the momentum, but it's going to take a while. And so part of that is the work that we're doing tonight. And, you know, the council and the planning board and the manager all getting together, making sure that there is that, that, that common path. So it can be done. It can be done and it's been done.
Yep.
So you go up there?
You have to.
Yeah, just have, yeah. Patrick Adrian Ward 1. I guess, well, one thing, correct me if I'm wrong, but with the senior housing in White River Junction, wasn't that recently heavily criticized for not really being, for having a lot of vacancies? So I had that question. But I guess one thing, if I did want to make this before that, I just want to, just my observation, and I'm sure that the planning commission is aware of it, that I guess that challenge, one thing I've listened, I've heard, I hear what David's saying and I, a lot of us here, we want to improve the image of Claremont and improve the image of housing. And at least from the public standpoint, there is kind of like, there's going, I guess, a lot of the recommended housing recommendations on here, kind of define, allow transitional housing, more increased permit number of units for duplexes, triplex, all these things. Now, I understand, I guess why, you know, here, you can have quality housing and diverse housing types, but I guess it is going to be, I think, speaking as someone kind of know, speaking as someone in the community and just kind of knowing how the community tends to react, it is going to be a task of, I think, the planning board and the city council and the manager to, in order to get people on board, it's going to have to be to harmonize those things. Because I think a lot of people, I think, when they think about the master plan, they want to improve the look of the housing. And it's very difficult because we have, a lot of our most blighted housing tend to be allotted these units. So that's, that's all I wanted to say.
Yep. Did you have? Yep.
Thank you all for coming.
Tommy Anderson, live on Maple Avenue. Actually, I have older children and I've transitioned and moved out of housing and I, I see that whole process because we've downsized and we upsized and we get all that. What I see in Claremont is that, when I first moved to Claremont, you could see the town. What is the first impression when you drive up Pleasant Street? What's the first impression you, you drive down Main Street? A lot of people who come to Claremont see how bad it looks in the center of town. You're looking at the core of the city, you're like, oh, do I really want to live there? So I think we really need to look at the city itself. How do you attract these quality people to Claremont? And for me, if I'm looking at quality housing, I'm looking for, how much is that house going to cost me? Is it energy efficient? Does it have energy-efficient windows? Is it a sizable house that I can actually live in there? Now, for a college student, they, they got to be able to afford it. And then as a homeowner, I'm looking at taxes. And then I got to look at employment. How far am I driving? Is there a bus? How far does it take me to go to Dartmouth? Or do we have employment here? So I think it, like, Mr. Putnam was saying, this is a complicated scenario. You need more employers that can get better employees, that can afford these houses. And what, what happens there is, once you get this working, you actually drive your employers here, you get better housing, and your taxes go lower, and it's a catch, you know, it's, it's this thing, as you get more and more and more, your taxes go down and then you get more housing, even more people want to live here. And I understand you have lower income housing here, I think. And that's, that could be a problem. You know, you, when I have, I have vice presidents I know, say, I'd like to live at Claremont, but there's nothing there. There's no quality housing. Why wouldn't you want a vice president living here? Who, who can afford? But there's no good housing that he could see. So if you build these streets with these nice houses, they, I guess, this, what I'm saying is, if you build it, they will come. And that's all I'm thinking, so.
Thank you.
Okay. I appreciate both those comments. They're, they're, they're valid and it's certainly part of what we're going to try to reflect when we give you our final, our final product. Anything else as we finish up quality? Yeah. And if something comes to you in the middle of the night.
Call you?
Yeah, give me a call. Absolutely. We're going to finish up with minimum lot size, and I'm going to let Olivia do most of the talking in this one. I will say though, that this, this graph that was distributed, did you get this? Yeah. This thing is my new favorite graph because it tells you so much, and you can really dig deep into some data here. It's surprising.
Let me, first off, I'll orient you to that graph. So pretty much this is, I took the main residential districts and kind of did an analysis of the lot sizes in that district and broke them up into different sections. So zero, less than one, less than point one, less, point one to point two, and so on and so forth, all the way up to greater than 10 acres. So, so each color is a specific district. And I, the boxes at the top tell you what, which districts have a minimum lot size in that section. So CR2, MU, City Residential 2, Mixed Use, Professional Residential, and Residential 2 all have a minimum lot size of point 111. So the graph, it's been interpreted in different ways by different people. You can see kind of different things. But I, I won't necessarily tell you what, you know, it tells me. I'll let you guys read it for yourselves. But, so in this one, we really want, see, see what you guys can think about in terms of, you know, what you think about. You know, there's already lots that go down to point 111 and even less if they're non-conforming. So, you know, looking into future, what do you think of as a minimum lot? How does that change in different areas of the city? And how does that relate to how you think of a home? And, you know, what's a small home to you? What, at what point is it small? Is an ADU too small for you? Tiny home, you know, these, you know, this, there's a lot of talk these days about extremely small living. And I'm just curious, what's your perspective on that? You know, that influences how, you know, we look at zoning ordinances and the size of a lot, and this ultimately the units on that lot, right? And then also how that relates to city services. So this does come back to density a bit. And the different housing types, but lot size is a, can influence that a lot. And influence is, you know, we were talking earlier, and in the, in the city center, you might have a small lot size. And so you might know your neighbor, especially if it's a single family. You, you might really interact, it might have, you're surrounded by amenities and city services, you might be on municipal water and sewer, you might have access to public transit. If you're in the rural area, you know, you might have, you know, your home, maybe an ADU, maybe you're a duplex, and you have more space around you, you drive everywhere you go. And so that, those might be larger lots. So I just want to kind of hear what your thoughts are in looking at this graph or thinking about lot size and, do you think that Claremont, does it seem right? Does it, the current lot sizes, think there could be some changes? What are, you know, what pops out to you, I guess?
One of the first thoughts that come to mind are that it's, it's somewhat consistent with where we were when we talked about housing types. And how open-minded we have to be as time goes on, because I think it's a moving target. Not necessarily knowing right now what the expectations or demands are going to be in five to 10 years. And, but saying that, we have now requested the city planner to provide us with information about tiny homes. And we, we already have asked for some, some, a recommendation from them on how to provide permitting or limiting to the idea of tiny homes here. And I'm not saying that we're open or closed about it. We, we can't make a decision until we have enough information about it.
Right.
That's, that's the thing. I know when we did our housing chapter for, for the master plan, and also when we did our land use chapter with the visioning, we talked a lot about minimum lot sizes. And one of the, one of the goals and objectives was to preserve the integrity and the look of our community. We have a rural atmosphere here that we all appreciate. And so, so we need to respect that. So there are certain parts of our land in Claremont that we really want to be preserved the way they are. So that, that complicates, you know, your growth patterns a little bit. But it's part of the, part of the visioning is, you know, our, our biggest resource here is our land. And the state knows that. That's why in the master plan requirements, land use is number one. And visioning is number two. So that's, that's all we're required to do. I, I know I really didn't say, I said a lot, but well, pretty much repeating a lot of things we've already said.
So.
I like what you have written here. I think that, you know, it's very forward-thinking.
So I think one of the issues is, we have a lot of, if you look around Claremont, we have a lot of these big New England homes with a big barn, not necessarily on a big piece of property.
Yep.
And I think the current ordinances, 10,000 square feet per unit in residential districts. So if you're trying to promote owner-occupied multifamily dwellings, what you run into is, say you want to make the barn, convert that into a dwelling, because we don't have a lot of people in the middle of town raising horses or cows or sheeps or anything like that. But I think to do that, you're not, you're going to run into having to require a waiver because you're not going to comply with the 10,000 square feet per unit. So you, but there's really, because of the way these houses were built with the big barn, it's, it's ripe for that kind of modification, but with the current or zoning requirements, you can't do it. I don't know if the same thing is true with the ADUs because you have to have that door that goes in. And the whole discussion with that was to try to set the ordinance so that it would, would motivate owner-occupied. So you have an investment, that somebody's there to invest in the property. I just, I think the 10,000 square feet can be very limiting.
I have a question, I guess, for either one of you. Are there towns who have recognized what Charlene has just spoke of, and have found a way of making it so that people don't have to get a variance for it?
To go smaller?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, you can change, you can get rid of your, your minimum. When I lived in Batavia, New York, similar community, 16,000 people, densely populated, my lot size was point 08 acres. And everybody around me had the same thing. And for the most part, everybody had about 5,000 square feet. And the homes were your standard three-bedroom, bath and a half. Some were a little bit bigger than 2,000 square feet, some were a little bit smaller than that. But, and they were all 19, 20-something, pre-World War II. Homes that never go away. They last forever. And people were satisfied and understood and enjoyed kind of that type of living. Now, everybody wants to live where you can reach out and say hi to your neighbor, and, you know, get a cup of sugar like that. But some folks do. And I, we enjoyed it. It certainly, it gave you a real sense of a neighborhood, and a real sense of, of community, where you could walk to the grocery store, and to the school, and to church, and to a restaurant, and all that stuff. So there are ways that you can get rid of that minimum. Easy. I mean, that's, that's a simple language change. Where you just say, as long as the minimum-sized dwelling unit can be built on that property, then that's how small you can go.
So, but more to the point of Charlene's question, where you have a house with a large barn on it, and it can be turned into a living quarters. And now there has to be a variance granted for that to happen.
That's under the, that's under, that's under the current language. That doesn't mean that that won't be the, the future language could be amended to say, you know, that's, that's something that's just allowed, it's by right. And the only permit you would need is, is a building permit.
Yeah, I think as I look through minimum lot size, a group three discussion, I'd be very hesitant to be changing lot sizes in Claremont. I think it affects the character of the community. But could be persuaded to change my mind. But I'd have to know models to consider on lot size averaging, density transfer credits, and flexi-lots. I guess I would want to know more about if we were to adopt any of those, now what do our lot sizes look like?
Yes.
Is there a minimum or maximum that go into the calculation of the average? And I guess regarding ADUs and rental units, we have, we do have a problem in this community with absentee landlords. And I am much more in favor with ADUs of making the, making it be owner-occupied into the main portion of, of that. And I just think people take better care of, and take more pride in, and look after their property much better if they're there, keeping an eye on it. So I, I'm really hesitant to be changing much with minimum lot sizes or adding any exceptions to owner-occupied.
I definitely understand the concern there, especially this is a, you know, we really took this as an interconnected issue. A lot of these, everything on that list on the first page, kind of see as they're interconnected.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you can't necessarily remove one without affecting another.
Yep.
So, you know, a lot of this is, would best be considered together. And even this minimum lot size, as already exists to some degree in the, in the ordinance and the districts, and certainly the future land use map, you know, impact on character and relation to services, existing services, how far someone, the DPW has to drive to plow the roads, how much extra road to drive. Those are all factors. And there are, there are alternative models that could create a little bit more flexibility around those things. And that's definitely something we'll be putting together, more clear language on that.
So I'd be kind of curious on how you're reading this.
Yes.
And what, what you're seeing.
Sure. So this kind of comes from, we got, got the idea to do this from the Strong Towns. There was a group down in Texas that looked at something similar. They compared what existed to the minimum lot sizes. And they saw in some of the districts, this peak, right? Or this group that was right near the minimum lot size. And to me, that says, people want to build smaller, but they can't. There's a desire either by an individual who buys land and wants to build smaller, or a developer who wants to build smaller or build more. And so they're building as, breaking it down as much as they can. And I think you can see that in not all the districts. You know, certainly not the agricultural district. It's really most pronounced in the R1, especially because of the number of parcels in that district. But it also occurs in CR2, CR1, PR. You know, a good number of the districts have this peak. And this does, you know, it does include non-conforming lots. And so I removed those, it would impact that. But that's what that's saying to me, is that there is interest in going smaller. And so if the minimum lot size reduces, there might be some potential there. And there have been other interpretations. I think Steve has his own image of, I think he looked at the, seeing that the different, the different types of lots, of both the, the number of small lots, but then you also have the ones that are greater than 20. And so that diversity in, in land and land ownership, and the use of that land and perspective on that land in Claremont also is, you can see that on this as well.
So in our housing chapter in the master plan, in the vision, so this doesn't contradict anything that you're asking us to participate in tonight, but it certainly does clearly define from a lot of different perspectives, a lot of people involved, how we want the community to, to grow and develop, and maintain the historic and rural character of the community, maintain and improve existing housing stock, meet the needs of current and future residents with optimal mix of housing types, create pathways to homeownership and increase housing equity and affordability for our residents, promote new housing construction in a way that encourages efficient use of services, land, and other resources, and create a positive image of housing opportunities. We've nailed every one of those in our discussion tonight. It's not over there.
You should just bring that over.
Yeah. It's just, it's taking, you know, those ideals and that work, and then having it translate into regulatory language.
Yep.
Right? That makes sense.
You can bring it closer.
You can bring it right up here.
You don't need to be, you don't need to go much smaller. You've already got.
You don't have to worry about that.
Lots that are, you know, less than a third of an acre. You take a look at that, those first three groupings.
Yep.
There are hundreds, if not thousands, of parcels that are already less than a third of an acre, right? That's dense.
So, you know, I'm, I think we're in a good shape regards to lot size and density.
Lot size is one thing. Density on that lot is another question, right? So you can, you can have more than one unit on that particular.
That was going to be my next question. Of the 90% of these first six or seven lot sizes here, how many of those are multifamily units?
Yeah, that's a deeper, that's a deeper dive. That sounds like a Scott project.
By the looks of this chart, I can tell you now that all these lot sizes have multifamily units on them.
So might.
Just look at downtown Claremont, you go down any side street, and you can see six, seven, eight apartment house buildings on a lot that isn't even point one.
When we did a survey of the, all the streets in the city center project, we did count how many light meters there were, or electrical meters on, on individual houses that were bigger than 2,000 square feet. And, and almost every house bigger than 2,000 square feet in the city center had more than one, one meter on it. So, so lots of multifamily here.
I think this, this information is a little skewed, because.
A lot skewed, it just doesn't include it.
It does, yeah, it doesn't go deep enough as to how many people are actually on those lots. I'm sorry, skewed was bad terminology.
I guess I keep going back to, how do you, it's one thing to chop up a house to multiple units, and then it, I've seen some things that just, it, it, when that happens, it just detracts from the beauty of the home itself. That's quite different than what I was mentioning earlier, where you have space that's underutilized. It's not used for the purpose for which it was built. And it, it sits dormant, and it decays, because it's not being used. And there's got to be a way through zoning and other ordinances, and relationships with developers or financial institutions to incentivize the use of that underutilized capital, which is what it is. And then that home becomes more affordable, because you can, you create a revenue stream by developing the underutilized capital. And it gives the homeowner options, whether they want to rent that space out to cover their taxes, whether they want that for a college grad student.
Sure.
To come home and start their life, or a family that's aging. I mean, that's what you're talking about.
Density.
Well, density, but you're also talking about flexibility.
Flexibility. One of those newer housing models is, is kind of going back to the rooming house, right? So where you've got a dormitory housing. You see in a lot of cities, where you get a room, but the common space is shared by all, right? So that's a way to maximize that underutilized housing capital. So somebody owns the house, but they've got five bedrooms. They only need the one.
Right.
So how can we make that house flexible enough so that it can incorporate the demand?
And allow the owner to stay in the house.
And allow the owner to stay. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What do they call it, cohousing?
Cohousing is a little different, I think. That's where folks have their, have a little bit more of an established, you know, they may have a, a bedroom and a bathroom, and maybe a little common space. But then they share the responsibilities of, of some of the larger projects. So there's, there's examples of that in our region. I think there's one over in Heartland. I think up in Lyme, they're trying to do some stuff. But that's, that's on a bigger scale. That's where you've got multiple buildings versus kind of the dormitory style. Yeah.
Any other thoughts on the topic of lots? Or questions on any of the description on this? Or really any, at this point, any topic on that list? Or that you feel like might be missing from that list? Might not have caught.
Are you talking about your list of recommendations?
Anything.
Everything's fair game.
Everything's fair game?
Yeah.
Don't let the list constrain you.
Yeah.
So as we, as we get near the end of this, the collaboration that we have with Scott and Nancy and the other folks at the planning office will become more intense, so that the language that we do eventually share with the city fits everybody's needs and wants, so that, you know, we're not giving you something that, that as planners, we think is the right thing. That's not what you're going to see. You're going to see something that is going to make sense to Claremont. The city staff will have a chance to give it a once-over. There is money in this for there to be legal review of language, so that that's part of this. But our next step is to, is to come up with the language. So based on the conversations we've had tonight, and in the past, and then also all the survey work that we've done, and then the continued conversations with Scott and Nancy and the folks over there. So we're getting close. And really appreciate this opportunity. This has helped us kind of transition into the larger regional housing needs assessment that certainly we hope Claremont will be a participant in. Because everything that we've talked about tonight is equally as important to everywhere else in the region. And so the hard work that we have to do has to be done regionally as well. And making sure that Claremont is in the center for all transitional housing, right? That, that it's spread equally in places that make sense, that some other communities that are employment centers recognize that those need to be a little more open to housing. So it's, it's going to be a fun project. It's for the next 18 months, is that we anticipate kind of doing this work. We anticipate there to be conversations like this with all of our planning boards, and select boards, and city councils, and there's 67 communities that we're working with on both sides of the river, from Orford down to Charlestown, over to, I think, Ludlow, up to Newberry in Vermont, over to Woodstock. So I mean, it's, it's the real, this is our region. This is really our region. So it's going to be, it's going to be fun, but hard. Yeah?
Can I make one comment? As a community that has led in past decades, and continues to lead in various aspects, inventions, and creativity, and that innovation, that type of thing, what I haven't heard in the discussion tonight is housing that would really embrace the latest in green technology, or that, you know, that's attractive to a whole culture that is growing. And I think there's something that was just opened, maybe up in Lebanon, that is the first of its kind to get a certain certification for completely being self-sustaining.
Yeah. Ten, zero.
Yeah. And I, you know, I'd like, I wouldn't want to have us miss that opportunity, because I think there's a lot of interest in that here.
Yeah, okay.
It's usually equates to money. I've done, I've done three passive homes, and they've all been fairly expensive.
Yep.
But that doesn't mean.
It is.
Not attractive to certain types of people.
Each, each one of those folks that did it was, one that I did was two college professors up at Dartmouth. Another one was for a doctor, and another one was for a doctor, all up in the Hanover area.
We're talking in Lebanon, it was a, it was a complex.
Right, right. I'm just saying that it's, it's a nice idea, but it is expensive type of housing.
So there has to be alternative ways of doing that, that helps the community like Claremont understand it and embrace it. And so that's why we have a new chapter in our master plan called energy. And it sort of goes right along with what Charlene was talking about. And it started with a conversation five or six years ago with a different committee. And we had, we had presentations from three different energy ideas. And it led us to understand that we need to have an energy committee and an energy chapter. So, so I think the energy committee has to be involved with housing in this conversation a lot. So I would ask you for you to, to include them in, in some of your discussions.
That is an aspect of some of the models we're looking at. That is an aspect of some of the models we're looking at, both for housing quality and lot size. There are potential ways that it could be incorporated. The right way to do it, you know, is a question. But yeah, that's encouraging.
Yep.
Thank you very much, folks.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Very appreciated.